The open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mastermore Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have harbor media recording this evening as well as Zoom for purposes of the minutes. I am joined in person today by, I'm Ness Cranti, the chair, Ally Anderson, the secretary, Tim Miller Dempsey, and Matt Cosman. Online, we've got Carrie Nie and Jen Benham. Okay, welcome. So, the purpose of tonight is to go through a couple things that the administration was taking some feedback from last week's meeting and reconfiguring financial information, so they are going to present that to us this evening. The first item is to discuss proposed transportation fees and act as appropriate. So, let you kick it off.
Terrific. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank the school committee for a ninth meeting. When Ness and I met to map out our budget meetings earlier this year, we thought we could get it in eight, and in fact, we did need this ninth meeting. So, this evening, as we mentioned, we're just wrapping up some lingering conversations, bringing back some new information, particularly on the subject of fees. And so, we'll kick off this evening just by reviewing that this year, we're really talking about some of the remaining levers that we have when it comes to trying to balance our budget. And so, given the significant number of fixed costs like contracts, utilities, outer districts, tuitions, and so on, we really have to hone in on the remaining budget levers that we have. And so, we've discussed reductions, reallocations, and efficiencies, and really what's left tonight to discuss are some of the proposed fees. Thank you, Sheri. And so, to take a Ness out of, a page out of Ness's book, I did want to just provide a little bit of historical context for this fee conversation. So, I've been in the district 20-plus years, and the conversation of fees comes up cyclically. I'd say most recently, attention was brought to the question of fees back in 2022, when the Sustainable Budget Task Force brought forth their document that outlined some of the work they had done around sustainable budgets. At that time, there was a recommendation that the school department take a look at implementing a bus fee. And so, again, responding to that feedback, we did want to share with the committee a full range of options of what a bus fee might look like, what comparable towns are doing, and in particular, our immediate neighbors. And so, tonight, we'll present some updates on that. Additionally, this evening, I'll also point you to, once again, the Sustainable Budget Task Force document, which did also recommend revisiting athletic fees, which have not kept pace with the increases in expenses in athletics. And did just want to share this evening that Ayesha and I, as we were doing some calculations on fees, do need to take into consideration several factors when determining the actual yields that we will get from some of the fees. And one thing we just want to be very mindful of anytime we're talking about fees are some of the socioeconomic considerations. So, we do understand and appreciate and want to be sensitive to the fact that socioeconomically we do have about 7.8% of our families, and this is drawn from some DESI data, that would qualify for consideration related to these fees. So, as we're calculating our yields, we did take into consideration that 7.8% of families for whom we'll need to take that into consideration. And so, tonight, we're really going to, we've discussed really all of the fees. Tonight, we'll mostly be revisiting the athletics fees and the transportation fees. And falling under the umbrella of transportation fees, just wanted to slightly revisit the proposed parking fee. And so, at our previous meetings, we did share some benchmarking that we did of our immediate neighbors with regard to a transportation fee. So, you'll see on here that Cohasset currently has the highest of our neighbors in terms of a bus fee with $350. And Milton is actually our highest neighbor in terms of a family cap at $650. And so, we found this benchmarking helpful when trying to estimate where to land in terms of a proposed bus fee. And so, after our first initial draft that we had shared with the committee, we did go back and have a conversation with Patrick Cunningham, our transportation coordinator. Ayesha and I were able to do some additional analysis. And so, want to be clear that at this time, we are not recommending an elementary bus fee. We are only focused on a secondary transportation fee. And our current recommendation, which was revised from our initial recommendation, would be $250 for an individual with a family cap of 500. As I mentioned, Ayesha went through, could you go back one? Thanks, Sheri. Went through a thorough analysis of our current ridership to anticipate the secondary students that might be taking advantage of the bus next year. That this includes some of our private school students in town, so resident students who live and go to school at a private school within town are eligible for transportation. And so, Ayesha did that calculation of those students in grade seven to 12 that might be eligible for this. Then, we did take a look, if you could go back again, Sheri? Thank you. We did take a look at what we might anticipate for participation levels. So, as I mentioned, given that 7.8% of our students would likely be eligible for a waiver for the fees, and we are unsure on family preferences and behavior with regard to this new fee. And so, in order to be conservative, we propose an 80% participation rate. We have a very imperfect crystal ball on this, and so, again, trying to take various factors into consideration. We also factored in the cost of the program, so students will have sort of reader cards that will involve some upfront costs for us. And so, the net revenue for that is, Ayesha?
$162.
$162 is where we landed with the potential revenue for this first-year pilot. So, I didn't know if you wanted to have some discussion around that. And then, I did want to just make one slight tweak to the parking fee as well.
Okay. I'll open it up for discussion, feedback.
How are the 7.8% of families? Are those self-identifying or?
So, the DESI has, if you can go back to that.
I know in the slideshow, it's from the 7.8 numbers from the DESI site. I guess in practice?
In practice, it would be through the free and reduced lunch paperwork. Even though lunch is currently free to all in Massachusetts, that is still that same formula that was used for free and reduced lunch, is the very same paperwork that we would use for determining waivers for these fees.
Okay. Would families know that, have that information, if they're not paying for lunch right now?
Yes, so we have pushed that out to families, and will continue to do so.
So, the families that would get billed for this will expect to get billed, and the families, it's not a like, no one's going to be surprised by either a bill or a lack of a bill?
So, we'll have to, the way we, I kind of envision it would be that people will register, and then in terms of, probably through Aspen. And then, if they're, they're probably under free and reduced lunch program, they probably just click on a waiver for that, and then we'll just follow through the paperwork on it subsequently.
Okay.
Kind of similar to how we do it with the athletic fee and the high school activity fee, there's a form that people fill out, spelling out, even with kindergarten as well, people provide like a tax documentation for it, and we can use a slide and scale for kindergarten, but we have a basis for waiving fees when it's below a certain threshold.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Yeah, just, I should have asked this the first time we looked at this. What is the reason for the middle school, current ridership 487, anticipated 712, 450, and then high schools 378, 378?
So, but, so, we believe that of the 378 riders, I want to make sure I understood your question, of the 378 riders, more than likely, most of, if not all of them will continue to be anticipated riders on the bus, and the 40 are people who live within two miles?
No, I'm sorry. I'm, so, middle school, and this is where I got hung up. I didn't realize the very first time, the 80% participation. So, the middle school row, we have a current ridership of 487.
Yep.
And then, we anticipate 37 less.
Right.
At the high school, it's exactly, it's 100% of the people.
Right.
I just, I'm curious, what, where do those 37 people?
So, in terms of, his information, his intel, in terms of the kids who, even if we normally leave a spot for them on the bus for middle school, a lot of middle school kids just get driven to school or from school, and those are what, those are the 37% that he's almost sure would not be included as part of that participation.
Okay.
So, the 80% is for those people that we're not so sure about in terms of what decisions they will make. Does that make sense, or does it confuse it?
I think so. I don't, I mean, it doesn't really matter. I don't really fully understand.
It's an imperfect crystal ball, no matter what. And so, again, Patrick, I don't know if you want to speak too?
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, a lot of it is a guesswork, I'm going to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I can do the best I can. We don't know what numbers are going, how they're going to go. They could remain, they could go up. I mean.
No, that makes sense. I guess I just, the logic of middle school to the high school anticipated is the exact same as the current ridership, and then the middle school is like, whatever that is, an 8% cut. I don't really, I just don't understand. I understand, at the end of the day, the numbers don't really matter based on your first statement, which is, it's, you know, we don't know if we're going to 80% participation or 75 or 85, so it's.
And I think, I think it was, if I remember correctly, it was because of that incoming sixth-grade class, the numbers kind of change from, for next year, whether it goes up or down, and then.
And the high school just happens to say the same.
Because those kids are already in that bubble.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Anybody else online, Carrie or Jen? No, okay. Okay, so, transportation, the other transportation piece.
So, the other piece of this is if the committee agrees in concept with the $250 individual fee for the bus. We did receive some feedback that perhaps we should consider parity between the close lot fee and bus transportation fee of evening that out to 250. So, again, wanted to share that we did receive that feedback and wanted to put it forth for potential consideration by the committee.
Any questions? Slater.
I got a lot of feedback from my peers on this.
That's good.
A lot of feedback, and it doesn't seem like a lot of people understand why it's happening. And I understand why, but I don't think they understand why if they feel like the cost is being passed on to them as students. And I was hoping there'd be like some way we can communicate to that, to them, that there is like, things going on behind the scenes. And also looking at this, it seems like a pretty steep jump, the jump close lot, when that's already very expensive and already very sought after. And I was thinking, is there a way to disperse it between close lot and far lot to make it a little bit more like equitable between students? Because it is a lottery system, and students want close lot and will pay for close lot. But, I don't know, it just seems like a pretty big jump even beyond 225.
Thank you for the feedback, and that's why we have students on the committee. It's great to have that finger on the pulse intel. And do also just encourage, you are definitely a conduit for information, but students are also welcome to email both me and the committee as well. So, that's terrific feedback. Thank you.
Yep. And I, I was going to save it for the end of the meeting, but next week is our public hearing, so we're required by law to have a public hearing. And we open it up, and we take in all kinds of feedback. And so, you know, I appreciate that the committee had voted on some of the fees last week, but I still think that those are up in the air because we have to vote as, you know, a full committee on the full budget, and that happens after the public hearing. So, we're open to any feedback.
And I would encourage you, Slater, to direct students to the budget website as well. I know it's a lot to dig through, but that might be helpful as well, just to scan through some of the slides as well.
Yep.
And so, I don't know if you want to vote on transportation and parking first before we move on to item three, or go through it all and then revisit the votes?
No, I think that's, I think that's right. Let's do the transportation, then we'll move on to item three.
Athletics?
I'm fine with that. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
I guess I could wait till any more discussion. So philosophically, I think from a transportation fee perspective, part of the rationale to bring it down a little bit, I mean, we're raising it from zero, but bring it down from the original proposal is not being the highest. And I think that's kind of in general, our philosophy. We have a different philosophy on parking fees, which I think I support. I just want to, like, that could be confusing to people of like, why is, and I think it's climate-related. Is that really what our philosophy is? That that's why we're comfortable being 2X other towns, and in other places, we don't want to be, you know, the highest fee. So, I guess, is my first statement accurate? I think so. And am I right? Is it really a climate thing?
I would say yes. So, again, encouraging bus ridership as opposed to driving to school is a factor. So, many of the students, I think Slater, you had mentioned at a past meeting, are a single student in their car, driving themselves to and from school, which is in part due to the age of the students. They're not yet eligible to carpool and drive other students. But it is, you know, from a global standpoint, a less efficient way to get to school.
It's climate and congestion too. So, if we can encourage the kids to take the bus, then it means there's less traffic coming in around the high school as well, right? And of course, that leads to climate.
Although, I wouldn't say, I mean, I think our anticipation, based on previous discussions, people are going to pay it. So, I don't think we're changing, whether we charge 100 or 250, congestion is going to be the same.
It's going to be the same.
Right? Sorry.
Was it not based on like alleviating, like, because it is a source of income, alleviating stress in other parts of the budget?
Oh, absolutely.
Thousand percent.
Well, absolutely, yes, for sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for saying yes, yes, bringing us back to that.
So, isn't that like the thing that's being focused on here, not the, I don't, I don't know, just, nevermind.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the broad, the broad, you know, I think in general, we would love to not have to charge, speak for myself, and I think all of us, but we would love to not have to charge fees, but across the board.
Yeah.
Right? Or be, be the lowest, right? That would be ideal. But in order to provide the education that we think is, you know, necessary and important and, you know, consistent with what the town's been doing.
Yeah.
We have, we need to be looking at all different of the levers.
And that's the full budget. So, to your initial question, your first question, why are we doing this? It's the full budget history and discussion, and I was going to email you something that I'd like to explain out. It's basically, a couple years back, when we did the override, we had put in place a memorandum of understanding that basically said that the school department wouldn't go above 3.5% growth rate until fiscal '28, to ensure that we were just maintaining a budget, you know, we're just not, not make, not requiring another override in a short amount of time. So, in order for us to not make cuts, we're trying to figure out what are the levers that we can pull here, and increasing fees or implementing fees is one of those ideas.
I think that just needs to be communicated to other students as well. Like, I, I don't, I've been getting close here on this.
That's great. I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Sorry?
They don't watch the meetings?
It's riveting.
I mean, you can tell the $162,000 raised by the parking fee will save between two and three teachers.
Yeah, and that's what I've told people.
I'm just curious, Slater, are you getting more feedback around the bus transportation fee, or more around the parking fee, or just in general?
Parking fee, that's the one. That's what people have always like aspired to go and park in the high school. I don't think kids want to take the bus if they don't have to. So, yeah.
Is the concern more the fee itself, or that there's such a disparity between close and far lot?
Part of it is the disparity. They're like, why would I pay 125 bucks to park in far lot?
Right.
But I think it is the fee itself.
I see a hand. John Germain. If you, I don't know if Shelly, if you can unmute him, or if you want me to. Hey, John, you should be able to speak now.
Okay.
And if you don't mind, just stating your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure. John Germain, Fort Parkers Drive. Got a question for Slater. Slater, I have a, the question basically is, is taking the bus for the older kids, junior, senior, a stigma? A social stigma?
Oh, a social stigma.
My kids call it the loser cruiser, and I'm pretty sure they didn't make up that term.
I can't, I can't freely hear.
People call it the loser cruiser?
I haven't heard that before.
It's the stigma of taking the bus that is, is making people not want to take it.
I'm sure that's an aspect of it. There's like a, like, in everyone's, back of everyone's brain, oh, I have to take the bus when I could be driving. It's, it's hard to say. It's different for everyone. I think kids want to drive if they can drive.
So, my opinion is it's, it's a privilege to park there. I don't think it's a, I guess we'll call it a right. So, anyways, I just wanted to chime in, just because, you know, my kid gets up and says, hey, I need a ride. I'm like, take the bus. And then I get the quote about the, I want to take the bus. And, you know, this, these fees are important, you know, to save positions, and I just wanted to chime in that we can't really let that be a factor.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online who has a question or comment before the committee takes a vote?
Can it be made louder? The sound was very low. Yeah, yeah.
Is it through the owl, do you think?
I know. Oh, you turn it off.
Okay, thank you. We're just having a hard time hearing here. I am not seeing any hands. So, is everyone ready to take a vote? And again, I think because we have our public hearing next week, this is still all up for discussion when we talk about the full budget, the full picture. I think it just helps to get the administration, you know, give them an idea as to where we're headed. Okay, not seeing any. Somebody want to make a motion? If we're ready?
You guys ready? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the proposed parking fees for transportation for fiscal year '26.
In the amount?
In the amount of 250 per individual or 500 family, $500 per family.
Anybody want to second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, thank you. And then, the second one is the parking.
I will make a motion to accept the proposed parking fees for fiscal year '26 in the amount of 225 for the close lot, and 250 for the close lot, and 125 for the far lot.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, item three, to discuss proposed athletic fees and act as appropriate.
Thank you. And so, this evening, I wanted to just remind the committee of some of the benchmarking that we had done with regard to athletics. Benchmarking was particularly tricky in that many area districts have as many variations on athletic fees as there are sports with various tiers that are made and so on. So, we basically took the base athletic fees and did a comparison for one, two, and three sports, noting that there are often differentials for various sports, hockey being the most typical, football being the second most typical, but other sports are in the tiering process as well. So, Hingham currently is on the high end for a single sport, however, is relatively lower when it comes to students who participate in two or three sports. And in terms of a family cap, again, there are as many permutations on family caps as there are districts and sports. But currently, Hingham is at 1,100 with a 1,300 cap for hockey, which is in kind of the upper third of area districts. And so, after discussion and taking feedback and doing a bit more research, we did want to amend and revise the initial proposal that we made with regard to sports. So, we had proposed, and there seemed to be general acceptance of increasing for a single sport from 425 to 450, with an increase from 600 to 750 for students playing hockey. We had had some discussion about perhaps including football in that differential. I did have a long conversation with Mr. Quattramoni and learned a lot about some of the football equipment that's used, some of the safety checks that need to be done regularly on helmets and repairs and so on. But he did indicate that the increased expenses do not rise to the same level as hockey ice time. And so, we did withdraw football from the initial proposal, given that the cost differential was not as significant as hockey. We are sticking with our initial proposal for two-sport athletes of adding an additional $200. So, a two-sport athlete who does not play hockey would be charged $650, so 450 plus 200. And on further conversation, we decided to cap that for a single-sport non-hockey athlete and to not charge for the third sport. For a family cap, our suggestion is 1,400 for a family cap, which, if you have two children playing non-hockey sports, you would not quite meet the family cap. If however, you then add a third student playing an additional sport, that would tip you above the family cap. Similarly, for hockey, we have a $1,700 cap. If you have a hockey-playing student who is playing three sports, and a second child who is playing three non-hockey sports, you will be underneath the family cap. If you have a second child that plays hockey, or if you have a third child also playing sports, that would tip you above the family cap. And so, Ayesha, you talk through our assumptions with regard to what this might yield for revenue?
Okay, and then we used, for the revenue, we used the current financial 24 participation, because that's a more current participation that we had a full year for, for one sport, two sports, and three sports. And in terms of the fee, using the information that Superintendent Roberts used, we stuck to a 450 rate, and 450, 650, and 650 for the first, second, and third sports. And using that, we calculated the revenue with an adjustment for income, enrollment, and the family cap of 80%. And we have the adjusted revenue of $411,000. One of the things that we did as part of looking at our revenue for the, for the current year, the budgeted financial 26 current year, forecasted revenue is 354, and we use that as a basis for what our net increase would be over what was budgeted before that increase in the, in the rate. And that gives us a $56,000 that will be a contribution towards our budget line. Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, in terms of a summary of the student fees that we have so far, um, for middle school, we have a hundred dollars, and high school is our activity fees. Um, the parking fee we discussed, and athletics fee we just discussed, as well as transportation, just to give a picture as to where we've landed. In terms of, should I go ahead?
Go ahead, yep.
Okay. In terms of, um, our revolving funds and our revenue, um, the additional revenue that we just spoke about would increase our, um, expense line, um, for our, um, expense and revenue lines for athletics in, in financial year twenty-six. And it would also increase our, um, our parking fee and transportation as well. Okay? That also brings us to our grants and revolving, and those increases will also, um, increase those amounts here. Um, and it also has an impact of, um, reducing our reductions as well. Because we, well, what, what has happened here is that because we, we draw, we brought down the fee, it also meant that we, um, the, um, the revenue that we collected came down a little bit. So that number you'd see from our twenty-seven, January twenty-seven slides, the, um, overall grant revenue came down a bit. Um, and that meant that we had, we were able to, because we had a little bit of an excess amount.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, we had a little bit of an excess amount from the, the fee revenue. So based on the budget that we were kind of st- stowing away for potential, um, enrollment increases in kindergarten and grade one, um, so we've utilized those amounts right now as part of the reduction in the fees. So it can, it definitely has us evened out now, and we're balanced off or, um, breaking even in terms of exactly where we should be. So we have no excess amount left. If we have any, any, any event that occurs which causes costs to go up, we'd have to come back to the drawing board in terms of any reductions. Um, and until the updated financial twenty-six budget, it reflects exactly what we just spoke about. And then this revised summary here, it can, I don't know if you remember the slide from the twenty-seventh? The revised, revised reductions, if you school, yep, there was a net amount here initially. I don't know if you remember that, um, an unallocated amount. Now we've been able to bring that down to zero.
How are you feeling with, um, kindergarten registrations? Are you comfortable doing that at this point? Or is there still an unknown that we might need one more?
So the-
The deadline is February fourteenth.
Right.
And so, um, A, I would encourage anyone listening to please get those kindergarten packets in if you can. Um, in addition, any new grade-one registrations, it would be very helpful, um, for families to get those in as early as possible so we can project, um, for it. Um, but I think we're reasonably comfortable at this point.
Yep, so we talked away one initially in terms of foster for kindergarten. But right now in terms of most of the enrollment, most of the registrations are happening from now until the fourteenth. Just in terms of just the census data that we were using this, these assumptions on in terms of that increase, um, we'll see exactly where enrollment lands on the fourteenth. And we've got to compare between, um, kindergarten and first grade because normally we have a little bit of a bump for the first grade.
Okay. Any questions? Jen?
Um, I don't necessarily have a question, but I just, I didn't know if you or Ayesha wanted to just go in a little bit about how it works when we collect these fees for athletics, for example. And I just want the public to be, um, just kind of remind the public that as we're collecting these fees for athletics, it doesn't cover the entire athletics budget, but it, it, it makes the offset a little bit higher, which then frees up, um, more money in the budget to cover, um, you know, teacher salaries that we were potentially cutting.
And, and also I would add to that, um, Jen, thank you for that, to preserve the range of offerings that we have for athletics. So we offer a wide range of both varsity and subvarsity sports. And so this offset will help us to preserve that range as well.
True.
Guys, one clarification on the athletic fee increase. I'm fairly confident I know the answer, but, so if you play hockey and one other sport, then you're paying nine fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Is that it? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Um, does anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Not seeing any. Okay. So is everybody good with moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me make a motion.
Absolutely. Can I just do it as presented? Or should I go through the individuals?
I would go through them.
Okay. I will make a motion to accept the proposed athletic fee increases for fiscal year twenty-six, um, increasing the individual fee from four twenty-five to four fifty and to seven fifty for hockey for the first sport and to six fifty for the second or third sport with family caps of fourteen hundred per family or seventeen hundred, hundred for a family with hockey.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You're trying to make sense of what he said.
One of your team powers activated.
All those in favor. Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I know nobody took the, uh, fee discussion lightly and, um, again, feel it is necessary in order to preserve the range of offerings, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the adjustments.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, okay. So, uh, moving on to item four, to discuss bus lease warrant and act as appropriate. So this has been, um, all up in the air just based on where we stand with, um, the landscape of grants that are being offered by the federal government.
So this one is a leases?
Oh, this is the leases, sorry. I'm ahead of, okay. Sorry, I'm ahead.
So I, so from the last meeting that we had on the twenty-seventh, there was discussion that should the, initially we had a, a warrant article, um, to be able to give the school committee the authority to approve bus leases going forward because we feel like this is, it's an operating activity. And by having, um, the school committee have that, that authority, it enables you to make decisions quickly rather than having to wait for, um, for town meeting each year. And this has become something that's a regular part of our operations right now. It's not a unique endeavor anymore. Um, so there was some hesitation by the committee in terms of the fact that there's a possibility that that article could fail. And if it did fail, um, the committee wanted to make sure that we had another plan or something in place to make sure that the leases that we were requesting for this year, financial twenty-six, could go through the warrant process if the school committee was not given that authority. So we worked with general counsel for the town, and we were able to provide two, two, um, warrant articles, one for financial year twenty-six for the buses that we need for financial year twenty-six, as well as the option, not, not an option, as well as one of the war- warrant articles being to give the committee that authority going forward. So hopefully both of those warrant articles will pass at town meeting, but we wanted to make sure that we outline both of them as part of the ones that you have available for voting on.
Okay. Sounds good. Questions or feedback?
So just to clarify, we'd be going forward with two warrant articles regardless if one passed or did not pass.
Exactly.
So tonight, do we need to, did we act on one of them already?
We did. So it's just the second one?
It'd be the second one?
Yes, please. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or feedback before we consider voting?
I just want to, I just want to thank Ayesha and John Coughlin for going back to the drawing board and, uh, getting this done in, in less than a week from our request from last week. Just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd echo that too. Thank you.
No problem. All right. Okay.
Absolutely. It's ready. I will make a motion to add a town warrant article for town meeting twenty-two, twenty-five in regards to the school bus leases.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you very much. Um, all right, so item five, to discuss master general law, chapter forty, section seventy-one, school bus cameras and proposed warrant, and proposed warrant by the Hingham Traffic Committee and to act as appropriate. So I believe this is just an update for us to know.
Yes, and so on January tenth, Governor Healy signed into a law, a bill that allows for bus-mounted cameras to be used to issue fines, uh, for vehicles that pass stopped school buses. So the Hingham Traffic Commission plans to propose an article for the purpose of authorizing, but this is important, not requiring, uh, the town of Hingham to enforce and, and find, and find an operator or owner of a motor vehicle who fails to stop for a school bus when required by law. So we, um, at Central Office, we've had some preliminary conversations, uh, with Patrick Cunningham and in our Transportation Department. We've had preliminary conversations with the Hingham Police Department. And in both cases, we were really just discussing the feasibility of this and how it might work on a practical level. Um, so in the event that this proposed article passes at town meeting and contingent on the school committee's support, our leadership team is recommending a pilot program to equip three buses with the necessary cameras um, in order to pilot this next year. Uh, the needed cameras would cost approximately three thousand per bus and would be contingent upon approval through the Capitol Outlay Committee. Um, additionally, the policy subcommittee would have to review the MOU with the Hingham Police Department and all related policies surrounding use of cameras. And just to be clear, any system that would potentially be put in place would be limited to monitoring and detecting violations of motive, motor vehicle operators who fail to stop for a school bus.
Okay, and talking to, um, to Porrick as well, um, himself and Officer Kilroy are looking at also trying to see if they can get grant funds as well for this as well, too, so we'll see where that lands as well.
Any questions, comments? Feedback? Not seeing anything. All right, so I don't believe there's anything for us to act on tonight. This is something that is, is going to be, um, presented as a warrant by the Hingham Traffic Committee. It was more of an update for the, the committee, um, to the extent that it gets passed.
Policy will.
Policy will. Add it to the list, Ally.
Yep, it's already on the agenda.
Um, okay, so item six, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. Now is the one where we were initially talking about buses. Um, there was a, the warrant for three buses, um, that we had talked about and voted on. There was a possible for ten additional buses that we received a grant for, and, um, we had not been ready to vote at the time, so I believe there's an update.
Yes, thank you. So it's funny because tonight it seems to be a lot of bus stock today, right? Um, but besides that, we, this has been quick, very quick moving in terms of from one week to the, or day to the next, in terms of the information that we've been getting. Um, even today, we got another bit of information that added on to what we had had before. So basically, back in Jan-, in early January, we got accepted for two point nine million dollar, two point nine million dollar EPA grant for ten electric buses. Um, and, and as part of that, that grant that we awarded, we, um, we learned last week that the, that, that grant had been revoked and taken back. And then subsequently, we learned this week or, or late last week that there's a possibility that we may be able to get those funds. Um, what we've been advised to do is to put everything, all our ducks in a row. So if it is that we get the green, if we do get the green light to move forward with the grant, that we can move forward with, with our pilot for, for year three. Because the pilot is still kind of not a hundred percent certain right now in terms of whether we will get the funding for it. But if we do, we will move forward with the pilot for a year, and we'll take feedback on that pilot in terms of, um, the, the operations of operation, operating those buses and seeing how it works for us in terms of our routes and everything, and also management of the, the fleet as well in terms of how our routes and everything else. And then if that works out well, we can expand it to, up to ten buses. What I'd like the committee to do tonight, if possible, would be to accept a grant contingent on the pilot being successful. And if the pilot is successful, we can then move forward with implementation of our ten electric buses. And also to, and, um, we've worked with our, one of our vendors, Highland Electric, to see if we can put an agreement in place to capture those funds, um, and put it in escrow for us so we can utilize it when we are ready.
And it's ten additional or is it ten in total?
It's up to ten, yes.
Up to ten, in addition to the three that we've got.
In addition to the thirty, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or feedback? Carrie?
Yeah, I had a few things. So I was looking through the grant, um, it says the recipient, um, and I'd emailed about you, emailed you about this too, um, so, but I just wanted to ask that, ask this publicly. Um, it, there's a recipient required contribution of up to one point two million dollars. Uh, where would that come from?
So similar to all our buses, what, what we do every, every five years, and now we've extended it to seven years, is within our operating budget, we pay for our, our, um, buses through a lease that we take on those, on those buses, and it's, and it's captured as part of our, our operating buses. What we have, our operating leases, what we have been able to see is that with the electric buses over time, paying for the electric buses and the infrastructure is equivalent to the cost of us leasing a diesel bus. So we don't have, we don't, it's not a big savings or a big dent on our budget either way. But with the grand, with the grand funding, if we don't have the grand funding, then it's not something that we, we will be able to move forward with, without.
Okay, so it would be kind of a wash with the grant?
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that's good. Um, and then the other question, so when we talked about this last time, I thought we weren't able to vote on a contingency. Um, I like the idea of, um, approving this on, um, the contingency that the pilot works out. Um, is that, I mean, have you had any talks with John Coughlin about whether that's a, that works?
So, yes, so we are in talks with, we, the agreement that we have enables us to work through the contingency. And, um, and we've, um, we've shared the contract with John Coughlin. He hadn't been, because we got this like late last week, he hasn't been able to come back to us in terms of any feedback on the contract itself. But I think, um, if it is that we can get a vote just on the contingency, um, the contingent nature of it, and I think it puts us in a good place.
Yeah, because when we originally talked about this, the idea was to slowly see how it, um, put, you know, do the three buses, see how it goes and, and kind of phase it in, um, which I'd be much more comfortable with that. Um, so that's, that's great. Um, I guess my, my third question is, um, I guess for Patrick, if he's still in the room, um, it's a, it's going to be a big change for transportation to go from all diesel buses to, to adding thirteen electric buses. Is everybody on board with that? Um, or how are they feeling about it?
Right.
Carrie, I don't think we're in a position to run thirteen electric buses. I mean, you, we're going to run with three, see how they go, take it from there. I mean, honestly, I think maximum eight buses.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. I look at our daily mileage every day, our sports trips, our field trips. I mean, we can't leave these. We got to take these into consideration.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
I'm guessing eight, maybe ten max, but I, I would say eight.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Um, and then this grant, we're not obligated to take all ten, right?
No, she said that we, yep.
Okay, okay, great. Um, and then what the other, just last question, it's a little nitty-gritty. The, in the flow-down agreement in Exhibit B with the Highland Agreement, um, it, it says it's, the buses are exclusively to provide pupil transportation and related transportation services to a public school. I know sometimes we rent out our buses to different organizations. Um, would we not be able to use these electric buses for that purpose?
Well, we, we don't, I mean, we don't rent out the buses itself. We, we are still the ones utilizing the buses. We just, into, into, for, so for example, we're still under the, the care and use of the buses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we, we don't actually give somebody else the ownership or anybody that's not part of the public schools access to the bus that way.
But if it was used for a different purpose, so like the rec center uses them in the summertime for camps, would we be precluded from using the electric buses, given it's not for a school day event?
I can follow up, but I- I can follow up, but I didn't think that that would be an issue, yeah.
I mean, they can't sit, they have to be used, so.
Yep.
We'd have to use them for something.
I can definitely follow up on that as well, and if, because we, what we're doing, we're in the process of doing as well, is just getting all the feedback, and then we can update it in terms of that, and, and before the superintendent signs, if that's one of your concerns, Carrie, we can definitely include that as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I think with, with the way the vote is worded, I think I'm okay with that, I had some concerns about just blindly agreeing to adding thirteen buses, but if we can continue as we, as planned with the pilot, then I'm comfortable with that, thank you for answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is the committee ready to take a vote? Yes, okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the grant of two million nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars from the EPA, on the condition that the funds will be used to enter into leases for additional electric school buses if the initial pilot program with three buses is successful.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For doing all that work, yeah. Okay, so, item seven, there are, there's just one update for the committee reports, unless anybody else has updates? No, all right, I know Jen had an update.
I did?
Yeah.
Yes. Finance and Facilities Subcommittee met this morning, and we went through pretty much everything that we saw here today, just a little bit more detail, and I think that's it, there are no warrants in the packet this week.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other items that are not reasonably known within forty-eight hours, does anybody have anything? To wrap this up, we've got, I appreciate everybody coming back today to discuss those last few items, we've got a meeting with the Select Board and Advisory Committee tomorrow, normally, we start at six-thirty, but our portion of that meeting, because we are being called to their meeting, starts at seven-thirty, so we will be joining this, joining the Select Board in their room at seven-thirty. Our public hearing, as I mentioned earlier on the call, that is a required meeting that happens every year, we're required by law to do that, so that typically happens at the beginning of our meeting, I would, you know, I would strongly ask people to come and give us their, their feedback and their views, we get a lot of feedback that way, and it's always, it's always good to hear, so, that happens on Monday, February tenth, we start our meeting at six-thirty, we then will close out the public hearing, and we will likely take a vote on our budget at that time. And then, other meetings, we've got a meeting on Thursday, February thirteenth at six-thirty, it's a joint meeting with the Advisory Committee, and another joint meeting Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at seven PM with the Select Board, Advisory Committee, and Capitol Outlay to go through that portion of our budget, we've got the capital side of our budget to discuss and go through it with those committees. So, all that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, thank you.